Commissioner Zubor, would you call the role, please?
Certainly Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Eggenberger, Commissioner Ocon,
President.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Acharya.
President.
Commissioner Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Zubor here, and Chairman Green.
I am here as well.
We have a full day.
The roll call is taking longer and longer time. As you can see, we're now nine strong, so...
Watch yourselves.
Yes, so the process gets better and better. Okay, so with that said, we had minutes for March 5th to go over. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Got the motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our agenda tonight contains four items. Any late additions from the staff?
No, sir.
And anything from the commission?
I think there's a correction. In item five, the John C. Lasco Trust, I believe that is between Palmer and Geddes on Canton Center. It says Cherry Hill and Palmer.
It is between Cherry Hill.
It is, but okay, you're right. No, it's not. It's south of Palmer.
It's south of Palmer.
Okay.
We're between Cherry Hill and Palmer.
They'll revise it when they bring it up.
I just had to prove that I read part of the packet.
Well, we do know that the wording of those notices is important as they go out. Okay, thank you for pointing that out, and...
Other than that, I'd like to move to accept the agenda.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion to accept the agenda and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so let's get right to it. First item of business tonight is a site plan. All of these are going to be site plans tonight. The first one is the Home Depot seasonal sales permit for Michigan Avenue, where we're considering the seasonal sales permit to have out exterior sales and properties located north of Michigan Avenue and west of Canton Center. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yeah, this is our season for our seasonal sales permits. You get usually a slew of these here in April and May. The first one is for the Home Depot on Michigan Avenue. This is essentially the same request as last year. They have some tables that they set up in front of the Garden Center and a couple other seasonal sale spots in front of the front doors. They also have on the side where there's about nine parking spaces where they have some pallets of mulch and other seasonal things for easy pickup so that you don't have to haul them all the way from the back all the way to your car. They have some palletized material there on the side along with some pallets of sod and things that they like to have for the period. This year, the period's from April 24th to June 22nd. If it ever warms up, they might be able to get the seasonal sale stuff out there without it freezing. But basically, they get two back-to-back sales permits for the year. So the existing site has a special land use for a garden, outdoor garden center that permits the outdoor display of seasonal goods. So this is on top of that. This is to allow stuff kind of out in front of the fenced area for that period of time. You have three 6x10 tables, several racks, and for live goods and, as I mentioned, that palletized area. The compliance permit from the building department is still needed once you guys approve it. Once they, before they get things set up, they have to get a compliance permit from the building department so they can go out and inspect to make sure it's in compliance with the site plan and within the bounds and make sure they're not blocking fire lanes, those kinds of things. So the permit period commences the date the tables and materials are placed, and all items have to be removed at the end of the permit period. So essentially the same request as I mentioned last year. It's highlighted in yellow kind of where the areas are on the screen up on top. We recommend approval of the two 30-day permit periods.
Thank you, Jeff. The project sponsor here tonight at all? Would you like to add anything to what Jeff has said? Okay, that's pretty straight, okay. Okay, all right. Anything from the commission? It's pretty straightforward. We've been doing this for, what, two years now? Three or four years? And it's, I don't think we've had any problems. Do you take the items in at night, or what do you do?
Why don't you go ahead and go up to the podium?
So the product is left there for the 60-day permit time. The items that he's referring to on the side of the building are larger bag goods just to make the convenience for the customer more simple so they don't have to load a cart, bring it outside, load it. We'll just bring them up inside. And then just for the convenience of loading, we'll load them on the side of the building out of fire zone way, out of traffic's way.
For the record, would you give us your name, please?
My name's Rob Lianzione. I'm the store manager of the South Canton store on Michigan Avenue.
So now that would include, because I know every year you have just loads and loads of mulch in bags around the side, sides of... So that would include that, but it's going to be out of the way. You're using up some of your parking spaces, right, for that?
Yes, sir, on the side of the gated Garden Center, but we try to keep it as neat and orderly as possible.
They shouldn't have any other areas of mulch other than that area outside of the Garden Center unless they're loading and unloading.
Well, to the west of the Garden Center, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's usually where that's usually there. I think Home Depot has been pretty good about getting material storage. I know I've called a couple of times about stuff at the back of the store, but you know, I think it gets taken inside pretty quickly most days. So I have any prob, I don't have any problem with this approval. Anybody have anything else to add? Anything to say? Any concerns, questions? Do I hear a motion? No, it's not a public hearing.
So I move to approve two 30-day seasonal sales permits for Home Depot on Michigan Avenue, parcel number 129990001701, commencing April 24th, 2018, and ending on June 22nd, 2018, for the sale of live goods, bagged mulch, and topsoil as shown on the plans.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and a support by Commissioner Ocon. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Eggenberger, Commissioner Ocon, Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Acharya, Commissioner Graham Hudek, Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Okay, so it doesn't, they still have to go before the board, right?
No, that's an approval.
Okay, good luck to you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, happy sales. All right, second item on the agenda tonight is a very similar one to the first one. At Home Depot, seasonal sales on Ford Road, where we're considering the seasonal sales permit for the property located south of Ford Road and east of Lots. Jeff, could you give us detail?
Yes, this is essentially the same request for the Ford Road site. A little bit different configuration, as you can see on the screen, because the Garden Center is in a different location than it is on Michigan Avenue. But again, the bagged mulch area is on the side to the west side of the building. The tables and displays in the front of the Garden Center area, essentially the same types of materials. Again, this one says April 23rd to June 23rd. I don't know why it's a little bit different date, but it should be essentially the same period, April 23rd for 60 days. So we'd recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Anything from the commission on this one?
No.
Same reason, I think this is pretty straightforward. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve two 30-day seasonal sales permits for Home Depot on Ford Road, parcel 049990001718, commencing on April 23rd, 2018, ending June 23rd, 2018, for sale of live goods, mulch, and topsoil as shown on the plan.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Engel has put a motion on the floor, and we've got it supported by Commissioner Zubor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Eggenberger, Commissioner Ocon, Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Acharya, Commissioner Graham Hudek, Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Good luck to you. All right, all right. All right, our third agenda item of the night is Michigan Fireworks Company Two, where we're considering a seasonal sales permit of fireworks at the property located north of Ford between Canton Center and Sheldon. Jeff, could you give us detail on that one?
This is the same request as last year. The project sponsors do not appear to be here tonight. We do have an issue on this particular site. They're not in compliance with the site plan. Doesn't really have anything to do with the seasonal fireworks, but we're not recommending approval of seasonal fireworks until the property owner brings the site back into compliance. We've been working with them a year. They've been radio silent on coming into compliance with dead plant material and their islands and things. So we wouldn't be recommending approval unless that was taken care of, and we don't have a compliance plan yet from either the property owner or the applicant. So at this point, you know, since this wouldn't start until later in June, I just recommend tabling this item until next month, and we'll place it back on the agenda, and I'll follow up with the applicant.
Other than an approval with a contingency?
Well, I'd like them to have time to get with the landowner and see whether or not they can get into compliance, you know, before July. So they've got to get some irrigation replaced and some plant material redone by then. I'll need to find out where they're at. I'll talk to the Canopkas. So they've been good, you know, good people to work with in the community for the fireworks sales. So you know, they generally haven't been an issue with their fireworks, but you know, and this is the same site and the same layout as they've had in previous years. So we'll just follow up, you know, even May or June is fine because they don't start until later in June for fireworks sales anyway.
That recommends tabling. Any discussion on this?
Well, they were out of compliance last year. Code enforcement tried to get with them to get in compliance, and the property owner has not been cooperative. So we're just in the process of working with them at the same time last year, and so, you know, we didn't want to basically penalize the applicant, but now that the property owner, you know, who's leasing the property to them hasn't done anything to come into compliance, it's our only way to get now the property owner to move on getting to compliance if his tenant can't move in, so... I would just table it so I can find out more information, yeah, yeah, right.
I'm confused, Jeff, by the, I mean, I'm assuming that... We're talking about the one up on Ford Road.
Yeah.
But there's the site plan and the location map are for the Michigan Ave. Home Depot in that section, so that's...
There's a map that just got reproduced in another section, so just look at that.
Okay.
Do you need a motion for that, Jeff? Well, we need a tabling motion.
Yeah, we probably just need a tabling motion.
My motion, we table item number three for the Michigan Fireworks Company.
Support.
Okay, we've got a tabling motion from Commissioner Engel and support from Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, or what? Call the vote, please, Commissioner Zubor.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Eggenberger, Commissioner Ocon, Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Acharya, and Commissioner Graham Hudek, Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, so this has been tabled.
Just duplicated the zonion aerial map in the packet for this item, so...
Clarify, thank you.
All right, so that moves us to item number four, which is the Autumn Ridge Apartments, where we're considering a site plan approval for a property located south of Cherry Hill and west of Lots. Jeff, could you tell us more about that?
Yeah, this is a, get to the site here. Yeah, this is a request for site plan approval for two apartment buildings, 18 units, located on Lots Road as part of the kind of an expansion to the Autumn Ridge townhouses, townhome apartments down there, south of Cherry Hill and the west side of Lots Road. It's about a two-acre site. All of the rest of the apartments are basically to the west and to the north of the site. So this is, was a residential site that fronted on to Lots Road. The developers picked up, and he's received some variances to the setbacks because the site is kind of separated from the rest of the site by ownership currently. So he's had to do some easements and things to kind of integrate it with the rest of the site. As you can see, the two buildings have garage units in the front that kind of face the road to the north. There's a stormwater detention pond south end of the project, adding a path and sidewalk along Lots Road. The only issue we have is the way they've calculated the brick composition on the buildings, and they'll have to probably redo that before it goes to the board and, you know, add some brick to get to the 50% the way it's calculated by code. And the only other thing we need is the fire marshal's standing. He needs a fire lane, parking lane plan so he knows which side of the roads are going to be posted with signs for the parking lanes. Other than that, we would recommend approval subject to those two conditions. I think the applicant is here, Mr. Tobin is here tonight if you have any questions on the proposed site plan.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And yes, sir, if you want to come on up and introduce yourself and tell us about your project.
I'm Michael Tobin. I'm very excited. We're going to be adding 18 townhomes, two one-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms, and 14 two-bedroom townhouses, all with a separate one-car garage. On the brick calculation, we counted all of the garage. We didn't realize the garage and the buildings had to be counted separately for the brick. And that's why we ran into the thing because we had submitted a long time ago, and everybody missed it until they're filing it up. And because of that, you know, the garage stands on its own from the building. So the architect is working that out. We should have that completed hopefully this week.
All right, if you'll stay there in case any of the commissioners have any questions. We're going to start down on this end. Commissioner Bennett?
No.
No? Commissioner Ocon? Anything? You're good?
I'm good.
Wow, okay, all right. Commissioner Zubor? Let's keep right on rolling on down the line.
I can't think of anything.
Nothing at all? I have a question that I'm going to need your assistance on, but go ahead. Nothing for you? Commissioner Engel?
All set.
Wow, holy smoke. Okay, go on.
On page, I don't know if you...
Thank you.
On page 27, it shows two entrances. Looks a little different than the site plan that we saw there. One entrance or two?
The property has two entrances off Lots Road. This piece, if I may...
The aerial shows...
I have two entrances into the property. Our leasing center is right here. This is the parcel that we're developing. And the entrance will be off this road, and we've already done it in the piece. But the only reason, all three parcels are owned by the same company. But because these are condos, it's too complicated to merge. But the merge is one property. I can work these two, but then they explain to me implying that if I work these two, it would create another problem then, so I can do that later.
Sidewalk then, the sidewalk goes all the way around?
There'll be a sidewalk, we have a sidewalk here, and we'll have blocks. If you can go back to the architect...
There'll be sidewalks along Lots Road.
What about Cherry Hill Road then?
Cherry Hill Road, the township is putting a pathway in. That's one of the things that we're working on is to acquire the approval from Wayne County to put a path along Cherry Hill Road to connect to the I-275 system. It's on a, there's a big drop-off on Cherry Hill Road there, so we have to put the pathway in up along Cherry Hill, you know, because there's the bridge crossing there over the expressway. So we're in the process of working out engineering on that to get that pathway system put in. Yeah.
You said you had one-bedroom townhomes? Is that what you...
Yes. We're exempt. A townhouse is exempt.
You aren't putting it on your own, any ADA compliant?
We have ADA compliant apartments. Not ADA, fair housing requirements. Yeah, we have apartments for that. We have... Will not. Townhouses are exempt. Everything else. The 168 units have, I forgot how many handicap units. But we've always made accommodations for people, even if it's not a handicap unit.
Yeah, if he builds these under the townhouse code, you receive the comments, he's going to have to do individual leads to each unit. If he builds them under the R-2 code, he's going to, he can have one lead for each building as his rental. So that's up to him on how he decides to do that under the building code, so...
Commissioner Acharya?
All set, thank you.
Question, just so I can understand. These units are basically designed for one person, right? I mean, maybe a couple, one-bedroom, a couple. Why do we only have one-car garage for each unit?
That's typical of apartments, to only have one car for each unit if they're providing garages. These aren't, these aren't ownership units, they're rental units.
Right, okay.
But we have one parking spot in the garage, one in front of the garage, and I think we have three-quarters of parking in the parking lot there. We didn't have enough land to get, I think we were just shy of three parking spots per unit.
So you're expecting that there will be, instead of guest use, you're expecting resident use of that center parking lot as well?
The lot is sufficient for both resident and visitor parking with the additional lot.
We way exceed the code, but we found that, I tried to plan for at least three spaces per unit. That includes everybody.
Jeff, could you pull up the elevations? Okay. When you were, when this was being designed, what was the criteria for your exterior elevations, if I might ask? I mean, was it as simple as possible, or...
Maintenance-free was the main one. Now, a lot of what you see, don't forget, there's garages in front of it, so you're not going to see it.
Oh, you always see it.
No, you're really not going to see it because the garage blocks a lot of it. I don't know if we, do we have a rendering with the garages in front?
Garages are forward of the building, so...
It's going to block your view. So you're only going to see between the garages as you're driving, and on Lots Road, you'll see the end, you know, in between the landscaping. You're not going to see a lot of the building.
What about on the south side?
The landscaping, the people there aren't barely going to be able to see anything.
Okay, Greg, we're going to have to work with him on it because these don't show the 50% brick on it because he's got the gable ends, he doesn't come up to the 50%, so he has to add brick, and we'll make sure it's balanced out on the building, on the visible portions of the building.
Okay, is it possible, if you could pull those elevations back up again, is it possible to add a little bit more interest to the elevations themselves, whether it be in the form of, let's say, shutters on the upper floor or a couple extra fake dormers, something that gives it a little pop? Those are so plain, they remind me of barracks. I'm sorry to be critical, but it just, when I saw this, it was like, I just feel like Canton deserves a little bit more than that. Wouldn't you agree?
I'll see, it won't do shutters because shutters are a maintenance problem. I mean, he loves it because he sells more, especially with the windstorms.
Well, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels on this, but...
No, 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 we have a problem with shutters. And the reason being is, on the older units that we have, when the shutters get blown off, we go to replace them, they don't make the same maintenance shutter.
They don't make the same one, I understand.
And it makes the place look a little awful.
But you get what I'm getting at, is that this is so...
And we'll take a look at it. Like I said, as Jeff stated, where are we doing the brick? Because we used to, we did, we had a misunderstanding. We thought we could combine the two. So now we have to run some more brick as well. And the architect is looking at what he can do.
I mean, generally, what we would recommend is where he's got vertical elements to run that brick up, or he's got a vertical element to help break the horizontality of the, to get rid of the barracks look on it.
There's an opportunity to break up a little bit of that roof there in between the peaks, just something that gives it more visual appeal.
Well, even covering the porches, maybe, you know, little roofs over the doors would be nice.
Yeah, and actually, that's a very practical feature to have.
We are, I'll be honest with you, we do put a little roof in front of the, over the front doors. It's not shown here, but we do do that.
Well, you need to show us what you're going to do.
I will, I'll make sure it's on the plan.
We don't have anything that shows what a garage looks like.
Just the site plan. The garages, I think in your packet, there's probably black and whites of all of the buildings. They're just standard square garages with brick on the lower portion with a gable roof on them, with a garage door in the front, so...
Question feeling on this?
Here's the black and white of the units with the garages in front, so...
Oh, yeah.
Being that, you know, we do have a brick percentage issue and maybe some visual issues, is this something that we want to come back to?
I'm okay letting staff resolve the brick issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were already working on that.
Do we trust Jeff with our aesthetics?
I think the staff is kind of, you know what we're looking for, Jeff, to improve this?
Yeah, Lee's going to be off the past week, but if the architect wants to send me something before you submit it, and I'll mark it up and send it back before you finalize it, before it goes to the board. So it's not going to go to the board until, you know, we're happy with it. If I don't feel it's where it needs to be, I'll bring it back to you guys.
Okay. You guys feel comfortable with that?
Yeah. Can we ask more questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Is there a local park? Jeff, what is the nearest park to this?
nearest what? Park. Our backyard is a park now. Well, if you look at the landscape plan, we have, we put a pond in, we have a big grass area, and it's all treed around. We're probably going to, you know, we're going to have some benches or stuff in there. The landscape plan.
I'm looking at the overall site and how much open space area. Do you have any other recreational facilities in the current complex?
Well, we have the pool area. But I think that would be it. Oh, yeah, it's all one, it's all the same owner.
What are you thinking?
No, I just, I was just looking at that, just that we have parks within, there's a lot of kids there, they have parks, and walking distance, 10 minutes walk.
Yeah, they have to walk down to, what, Michigan Avenue?
There's a green space here.
Yeah. And then there's, did our fire, we already have the accident entrances for fire because they had a density?
Need to go, yeah, you need to share your mic there, I can't hear you.
Sorry. So the fire entrances and exits, we passed that?
Well, I mean, he's right next to one of the main entrances to the thing, so he just needed, the only thing the fire department needed was a fire lane signed plan so they don't obstruct the fire lanes. I mean, this is right, I mean, this is ideal because it's right on the entrance to the apartment complex, so you're going to have then buildings that flank both sides of the road. Right now, the southerly entrance is basically, you know, you have, you know, had a house on that property, so this will help actually buffer the house to the south a little bit better with, you know, the backs of the buildings and the storm pond and the other open space he's got, so...
There's going to be a curb cut also for turning in?
Right where the parking lot, and well, the driveways will come, the driveways, if you look at the plan, the driveways come off the driveway, the driveways to the, the garages come off the driveway, and the driveway to the parking lot comes off the driveway to the, that's internal driveway to the parking lot.
There'll be no cuts into Lots Road.
There won't be another cut to Lots because he's already got the one...
All the driveways come off of Douglas Drive.
Yes.
Yeah, just like everything else does in the apartment complex, so...
Confused, Jeff, by the drawing, the page that you have the aerial photo on shows the site as being like the top half of that area.
A lot narrower.
Yeah, it looks a lot longer and skinnier than what's shown on that drawing.
You may have not caught the property to the south, it's in...
Yeah, because where the, there's a house shown where the...
Yeah, there's one house left. There's like, there's three properties there. He's got two of the three properties, so...
Okay, so the site, the word "site" on our site plan is also part of the site.
Does this include both those houses to the south of?
This includes everything except, you know, this should have included this piece too, I think.
Yeah, not that bottom one, though.
This piece will still be an outlier. Yeah, the yellow line needs to be amended, my mapmaker didn't get the site boundary. This site includes both those properties, right, Mike?
Yes.
So where it says "site" is actually part of...
Part of the site, right.
But to the south of that, that house is not part of it?
No.
Southerly house, yeah, is not included, so, sorry about that.
Okay, yes.
Is this final site plan? Has this been seen before? I don't see any where it says preliminary or final.
I don't see anywhere it says preliminary or final.
For apartments, there's just one site plan.
Just one site plan?
Yeah, the development, it'll go through engineering approval before building permit, but yeah, it's not like a condo where you have preliminary and final site plan, so...
What's the feeling of the board on this? Is this worth just letting staff handle these issues, or do you want to see it again?
Staff.
Staff, okay. All right, then proceed.
And it's still have to go through the board again, then, right?
Before it goes to the board, he'll have to make the corrections, so, counting on you.
No pressure.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Autumn Rage Downhouses on parcels as noted, condition of providing acceptable brick facade coverage, a modified planning bailout, bed layout, and a public safety fire lane, and the staff to approve changes to the facade of the buildings, and incorporating the garages also.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion, we don't need to say anything about the brick because that's already been handled.
It's in the motion, so...
Gotcha, okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Angle and support by Commissioner Zubor, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Bennett?
Commissioner Eggenberger? Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ataria?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Angle?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes, thank you very much. Luck to you.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, we do have the applicant for number three that's here. If you want to take that off the table and consider that tonight.
All right, I have to have a motion to take that off the table.
Support.
All right, who made the motion?
Anne Marie.
The original one? No, Anne Marie did.
Okay. Who had a motion to remove item number three from the table, to, that place it before us again, and support, all in favor, let's just do voice vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so...
Okay, yeah, Mr. Knopkes here tonight to address the seasonal sales permit. Eric, one of the things that we discussed was, one of our conditions was before the permit was issued, was dealing with the property owner and getting the site compliance. Have you had any discussions with the landlord about getting the site landscaping back into compliance? That was a condition of our review when we did a staff review. Have you had discussions with the landlord about getting that work done? We've been after him for a year to get the site back into compliance, and he hasn't been...
Please speak into the mic for us, please.
I'm sorry, no, I was not aware of that, but we have just as many problems with the landlord as probably you guys do, so me being able to get him to do anything on your behalf, if I can get him to do stuff for me, I'd be happy, so...
It'll be on your behalf.
Right, well...
Because if it doesn't get done, you're not going to have a permit to sell.
I have no idea what I could get him to do, to do that. I mean, I don't understand why I wouldn't be on my end to get his landscaping.
Okay, we're making a land use approval on his site. His site is not in compliance right now. We've been working with him a year to try to get him into compliance, and he hasn't budged one inch. So our recommendation is not to issue a permit to allow the use on the site until it's in compliance. So unfortunately, last year, he wasn't in compliance either, and we basically, we're starting to work with him on getting to compliance, and we didn't make any headway with him, and we let you go ahead and continue with your permit last year. We didn't make a condition last year. Code enforcement says they haven't had any response from him, so our recommendation is to recommend approval of your permit, subject to having some type of compliance plan in place and having the work done before you need your tent up. So he's got all spring to get the work done.
Just going to cancel our permit.
Yeah.
He's let us set up then, and will be hurting us, a family company, and, you know, the teachers...
Well, I assume you pay him something, right?
I do, and he keeps increasing it every year, and the only reason we keep doing it is because it does supplement my family's income, and it keeps the two Plymouth Canton teachers busy. I mean, he's not a nice man, and sorry to say that out there. Every time, he's always sticking us with new stuff and new stuff, and it's the only place that's compliant in Canton, but I, I mean, humbly, I don't believe according to state law that I can be denied because of his landscaping.
Well, unfortunately, you...
I mean, you don't own the property.
Correct, correct.
His site is not in compliance, so we have local zoning jurisdiction to make sure, I mean, we, you know, if he needed anything else on the site, we wouldn't let him do it until he brought the site into compliance, so even though you've got a state fireworks license, it's a local prerogative whether we want to let you operate on that site. So that's up to the planning commission, whether or not they want to allow you to go ahead and operate on the site with the site not being into compliance, but...
Unfortunately, you're caught in the middle, and it's not your fault, but the truth is, that is not your property, you're actually going to be leasing that, so we have to deal with the property owner in order to make it suitable for you to do what you're going to do.
I understand that. But I humbly, like I said, ask you, he's not going to do anything for me. I mean, I could definitely go to his daughters, who he's kindly pushed me off to, and...
Had conversations about a contract for this year?
Yeah, I have it already signed, and I've already paid for it, and it's unrefundable unless the state revokes my license, but the state has a law that says that it can't be discriminated against the fireworks code in the state, so I've never heard of the ability. As long as we're meeting all the state requirements, whether the property owner is or not, I should have the ability to set up that, I mean, we, that tent. I'm going to follow every ounce of code according to your fire department and everything, and that site, although is up to that code, it may not be for the landscaping, but for the tent, it is, and I believe I shouldn't be discriminated against for that.
I mean, the issue is, yeah, he meets the requirements of the state law for the fireworks code, but the state, but we have, the state fireworks code does not preempt us from local zoning approval of the fireworks permit, so...
Is there a danger for him not, I mean, whatever, it's just...
It's not a danger issue, but, you know, if the landlord needed anything else on the site, or, you know, we wouldn't allow that to happen until he brought the site into compliance either, so basically, it's a site maintenance issue.
I will absolutely promise to go there tomorrow morning and beg him to do it, but not him.
Yeah, he needs to contact us and the code enforcement department, and, you know, if we have a compliance plan and we know the work's going to get done in a certain period of time, I don't have a problem with that, but he has made no effort to make any improvements on the site in approximately a year since we've been trying to work with him.
Jeff, can I ask who you're ma, I mean, we go through three or four different contacts every year with these people, and they, sorry, I mean, we do.
Who are you working with, Eric?
Right now, I'm on Christina O'Raah. It used to be Eddie Bacall.
That's who we used to work with, so...
Has left the Canton facility and is down river only, and now I'm under the impression that his brother Jacob Bacall is under that, but then last year, we got dropped by them with no response after we had teachers...
Well, they're the owner, regardless of who you're working with, they're, Bacalls are the owner of the site.
Understand, but all our main contact only funnels through, I believe it's Jacob's daughter, and that's Christina O'Raah, but...
Well, I mean, if the planning commission wants, you know, you guys can condition it or not condition it, but we had to bring it up because, you know, the billing department and the code enforcement department's having a hard time getting him to do anything on the site.
Be specific what the problems are, Jeff?
Well, basically, every one of his landscape islands is basically denuded of any vegetation. He doesn't want to fix the irrigation to get the irrigation to the islands, so he doesn't want to plant new trees in those islands and get them mulched. I mean, it looks really bad, so...
Yeah, it is bad.
It's a property standards issue, and so...
Citations?
Well, we will, we'll have to take him to court, but that takes a long time to get him to court. He needs to be in, you know, mid-June, so Mr. Bacall has, you know, he can get an irrigation contractor and get it fixed and get plants, you know, done by then, but, you know, what's the impetus for him doing that?
There's no other site in Canton you can use?
Not that meets the codes. I mean, there is one, the Joanne Fabrics area. You guys were able, well, actually, they revoked the, Canton had the ability to add certain restrictions because they had jurisdiction over it, the state brought that back to the state. We're still following your old codes because we respect the...
Okay, well, the state reviews it from a fire code standpoint, so the state fire marshal is the one that reviews it from their point. The state doesn't review, and they have their own guidelines for fire tents. That doesn't preempt us from imposing our own local zoning regulations on it, as long as we're treating all uses the same, so that's what the seasonal sales permit is, it evens out the playing field for everybody that's doing seasonal sales, whether it's fireworks, whether it's pumpkins, whether it's flowers, whether it's whatever. So the issue here is Eric's layout meets the guidelines, but the site itself is not in compliance, so on its face, you know, we're working with a non-compliance site to begin with, and that's the issue we're dealing with, so, you know, if you want to let him go forward and have a fireworks tent, I mean, we can go ahead and do the normal, you know, code enforcement process, but, you know, that's up to you, that's why I had to bring it up, you know?
Going on last year as well, correct? So were any, did code enforcement issue any citations last year?
Yeah, we've had them, we've had them under violation, you know, the code enforcement process takes a while, so, and there's only so many code enforcement officers in the area, so when an issue comes up and it hasn't been taken care of, then we're not going to allow somebody to move forward with an improvement on their site, or to allow somebody to do something on their site until it's brought into compliance, and that's where Eric's kind of in a rock and a hard place here because he's subject to basically the errors of his landlord here.
So no citations have been issued for the site?
I don't know, I'd have to, I don't know whether there's actual, a ticket issued, you know, whether there's a notice of violation outstanding, whether he's given a certain amount of time, but he's been non-responsive. So the next step would be going to see, you know, doing a court appearance ticket. They probably haven't gone to a court appearance ticket yet, so that would be, if he doesn't respond, then that would be the next step, is a court appearance ticket.
Jeff, we've never been married aware of any of this, is that correct?
I made you aware of it when I did the technical review a few weeks ago, after your wife brought the application in. If you look at the letter, it indicates I need a compliance plan for the site. I put it in writing back to you as part of our technical review of your permit, yeah.
I mean...
Doesn't matter if you find another site, you've already paid.
I did, but not only that, is I paid $20,000 for the fireworks, and I'm not going to get refunded back, and so I got $20,000 in fireworks that I have to order in October. We haven't had an issue at the site ever before, and the way these people work, they made me pay upfront, and we do, we paid the last balance of the check, but we, in order to get everything through fireworks sales, it's tough. I mean, I wish I was selling flowers or umbrellas, it'd be a lot easier.
Have we won't make as much money.
Who made you pay upfront?
O'Raah, the owner of that complex. We paid in January, and we paid the last check last month.
Okay, and you've already, and you paid for your fireworks in October?
October, yes. So $20,000 in October, and then I have six, I got to look at the check, for what we have to them already for the rent of that location.
I mean, I don't have a problem if you give him a conditional approval, but we're going to have to get some type of compliance plan, even if he doesn't have the work done by then, I'm going to have to have a plan for compliance before the billing department's going to be wanting to issue a tent permit.
I have a question for the rest of the planning commission. If this is granted, how do we guarantee that the work will be done? If this has been going on since last year, I mean, if we, the owners already got the money, so there's...
No incentive.
Right. I mean, there's no reason to clean it up.
Oh, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't believe he will for me. It is just what they've done to us and drug us through and change, I mean, I'm on record, so I won't say everything what happened, but what they've done to my, it was...
Can you have Jacob, get ahold of Jacob, tell him you got it...
I can't get ahold of him, sir, I can never...
Can you provide me the contact of whoever you're dealing with so I can give it to code enforcement so that we know who to contact?
Absolutely, 100%. I will do everything in my power to help you guys with it, I promise you.
I think so, too.
You've put...
I'm all about letting them do it this year, and having, I notice right now that before you...
We're not going to do it next year.
Before you dish out any more money for next year...
100% agree with you. I, this year, I mean, tomorrow morning, I'm driving to their office with this, I'm, obviously, you can probably see I'm a little stressed and panicked after hearing this.
I mean, I know both Jacob and Eddie, so, you know, I know it's a family business, they've got other businesses, they've got other plazas that they manage elsewhere in Pittsfield Township and other locations, so I just need to know, code enforcement needs to know who to contact, and he needs to know that they're going to have a problem getting approvals on this site for anything else if they don't bring the site into compliance, so we need to, you know, we need to...
They shouldn't get approvals on anything.
Can we approve with a contingency?
Well, that's what my recommendation was, is I need at least a...
But I don't...
I at least need a compliance plan, I need a timeframe for when they're going to get the work done so that we can hold them up, so without that, they're going to go straight to court. I mean, the problem is, is I don't do the enforcement, so the billing department and the code enforcement department does the enforcement, so they brought this to my attention when the application came in this year, so that's why I made the comments in our technical review, you know, back to them, and then, you know, we haven't heard back from anybody regardless of what's going on, so Eric, you know, I apologize if you didn't see the comments, but I thought they were pretty clear, you know?
No, I just...
You've been working with Eric, you've been there, what, three or four years now?
This will be the fourth year, and just like you said last year, I mean, you made the comment that we are the people you want in Canton because we respect Canton, we enjoy being here, we don't go to every city that we're there, we follow every rules, we check with the officers on how things are going, we get calls at 1:00 in the morning if they looking for certain things, we want to help the community, but Greg, just like you said...
We got a couple months to get this resolved, he's in early, he's not, you know, he doesn't need to be, he doesn't need to get his tent permit from us.
He has no reason, like she said earlier, that he's going to, he has money, or actually, I should say she, they're, I've humbly begged him on what they've done.
I would think they would be in breach of contract by not providing you an approvable site, you know, after taking your money.
And you're probably correct, I might be able to get my $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 back from them, but I'm not going to get the fireworks back, and then, once again, I just didn't think this would be an issue. We were there last year, it's always looked the same as last year, and I, you're right, I did not read that on there, and that's my own fault, but that wouldn't still stop me from getting the fireworks, but he has no reason to...
If we contingently do this, I mean, next year, you definitely, by October, maybe start looking for another site if nothing's changed.
Well, I would, I would love, I can, I agree with that, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it would probably put me out of Canton if he's not compliant, but I would definitely try the Joanne's site again. They had a religious issue.
So what do we feel up here at the commission and do, just...
Jeff, is there any other fireworks sales in Canton?
We don't have any more applications so far this year. Usually, we get one for the Meyer parking lot, we haven't received that one from TNT yet this year, so...
Thought there was one in Myers, okay.
I think we should let them do it this year, knowing that this isn't going to happen next year.
We won't approve it next year.
So don't put your money out. Unless the site's updated, correct?
Correct.
Right, of course.
And Jeff, I will do everything possible to help you after this.
They can contact me, or they can contact code enforcement directly, so, you know...
All right, well...
I guess my concern is if we approve it, and I understand the situation we're in, and I think I have the sympathy for you, but my concern is, is then nobody will look at you guys like you have any teeth.
We just need to go, we just, part of what we try to do is we get, we try to, any code enforcement thing, what they try to do is get compliance, voluntary compliance, and we try to move through it without taking people to court. If they're not willing to be responsive, we're going to have to take them to court, and they're going to have to go see Judge Low. And Judge Low's going to give them a certain amount of time to get the site fixed and up to date, and if they don't comply, then they're going to get fined. That may take a year, because that process is not, you know, you know, those things go back and forth and back and forth.
Bills of justice, Graham, slowly.
Hey, hey, watch it.
Oh. It just takes a while to move through a code enforcement process, because it's not a high priority, the court, you know, unless it's a safety issue, this isn't a safety issue, this is a property standards issue.
Right.
So it just takes a while, so obviously, we haven't gotten any response from them in the last year. Usually, we give them till the next growing season until it's time to get the landscapers back in sync, and, but we don't even have a plan from them, so I think the complaint last year that I heard was, is he couldn't afford to get the irrigation fixed to the islands, or there wasn't irrigation to the islands, and if he planted a tree, it wasn't going to grow, or there's other ways to take care of that with gator bags and things, but they haven't made any attempt to fix anything, so, and it's just not the trees And it's just not the trees in the island. There's other overall site issues with the landscaping. It's an older site, it probably needs to be overhauled a little bit from a landscape standpoint.
I would agree with Commissioner Okon, uh, because you're putting this gentleman, using him as, as leverage, and our real issue is with the landlord, but I would, would caution that, yeah, this gotta be the last time. It has to be, because obviously, we don't, it doesn't mean anything to keep, you know, pushing for standards if you're not going to, you know, comply.
Be awarded with a, a red for that. I, I completely understand that.
I have one more comment. I think that we do need to be aware of setting precedents. As much as I totally feel for the applicant, I think that if we do, we need to be aware that if we do accept this, the next time somebody comes in and says that they already paid, the landlord isn't responsive, we may not have that strong of leg to stand on. I think we do need to be very careful about setting precedences.
My, my issue is not that he's already paid. That's, that is an issue, but it's, that's not my, my issue is that he's a, he's basically a third, third party, right? I mean, we're, our issue through the township is with the landlord. Unfortunately, the landlord is, is using him, um, but our, our issue is still with the landlord, not with, uh, the, the petitioner here for this particular project, and it is not a safety issue, and it's not something that we are totally unfamiliar with, and we did approve it a year ago. And so I, my feeling is that we should go, go ahead with it this time.
Well, also, the, the model motion that Jeff wrote, um, does, uh, does say that it's conditioned, subject to the landlord bringing the site.
Or at least getting a compliance plan.
Or at least getting a plan.
Right, a client, a plan.
Put that in your motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, Chairman Green.
Okay, so if you do that, though, however, that's, that's basically saying he's still on the, he's still on the hook of not having his sales based upon-
Right, a compliance plan.
I need something from the landlord telling me how he intends to comply and when he intends to comply.
But if we approve it with this condition, then if you don't get the-
Not saying it has to be in total compli, I think what we're saying is it doesn't have to be in total compliance, but at least we need to have a, a schedule for compliance.
But if you don't get even that, then, because that's what this, that's what this motion does. It says, yeah, we'll approve it if we get this or that, but if they don't happen, then he doesn't get, get to sell his fireworks.
But he needs to make a motion and vote on it, so you can either agree with that or not, I guess.
We have a couple questions.
One question is, you know, when you talk about an issue, uh, where the landlord is not compliant, and then we let the tenant actually go ahead and do business, that becomes a precedence. The next time there's a landlord versus tenant issue.
If it was a tenant within the building, and we have an issue with, you know, you know, with a vacancy, and he wants a new business in there, or he wants to do something else on the site, we wouldn't let him do it until we had some type of compliance plan.
I think-
So he's a, he's a tenant on the site, even though it's a temporary tenant, you know, even if he had vacancy in the building, you know, you know, we're gonna, at, at some point, we're gonna like hold up any occupancies until he's compliant.
And, and I would ask you guys, if you do it with, inside there, not a temporary, you know, i- i- if it was, like you were just saying, if it's someone inside the building, allow me to proceed this year. I mean, I can't get anything back out of it. I don't want you to hold me against him, and I understand what you're saying on precedents. I, I, I run a business, and, and have been well aware of that. Unfortunately, in this situation, I don't feel I'm gonna have any leg to stand on, and all you're gonna do, when you mean to punish him, is punishing me, my family, and that's it. And I, I can completely respect and understand that you guys make me understand after this July that if that's not up to code, and I don't help you get it up to code, I'm not getting it for next year. And that's a precedence for next year, or any other business that happens as this, unless there's a safety issue. But you don't have a lot of tents, and this is a seasonal precedence, not an occupancy inside of a building. Let it slide for this one, please.
No, I think this is small in the scheme of things, guys, and we've already put him on notice. If he does this again next year, we're not gonna approve him, so he doesn't need to outlay money. It's an aesthetic issue, it's not a, a safety issue for Canton, and he was on notice, what, two weeks ago when his wife filed the application?
Month ago.
Yeah, so, and he had already put out the money. I, I don't have a problem with this. The landlord's gonna be on notice of this, they're gonna get in contact with whatever names they were talking about. I do not think that this is a big issue for us to set precedents on. And, and I think we've let it be known that we're not happy with this, and we're not, we're not gonna do this in the future. So I, I'm, I would vote for that we allow it this year, and he knows we're not gonna do it next year, um, and move forward.
Take the motion, Julia.
But we're still gonna proceed with the ordinance against him, right, where's the ordinance?
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. Basically, Eric needs to let him know what the problem is, in that he's not gonna be able to lease that for fireworks next year until he's, comes into compliance, and then he needs to work with us to get that done, because, you know, you know, obviously-
So then would you proceed?
You know, we don't want another, you know, if Eric doesn't work, and he finds another fireworks tent to lease to, you know, I, I don't know, so.
Can't have the contingency, because he's already been paid. He has no incentive. But he will next year, because we're not gonna do it. All right, I'll, I'll take a stab at this. Thank you. I move to approve, unless you want to take a stab at it. No. Julia.
I don't have it in front of me, actually.
Oh.
Fine.
I move, we'll, we'll push the button. I move to approve one 30-day seasonal sales permit for the Michigan Fireworks Company on parcel number 039990025001, commencing on June 20th, 2018. And that's it? We're not gonna make a conditional? No?
Non-conditional.
A support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Bennett?
No.
Commissioner Egenberger?
No.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Ataria?
No.
Commissioner Graham Hudek? Commissioner Angle?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes.
Motion passes five to four.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Jeff, you'll make sure ordinance follows up?
Yeah, I'll get with, I'll get with the building official. He coordinates with our ordinance officers.
Because if, if-
Give them to me, and I'll pass them on to the code enforcement department. Okay, thank you, Eric.
Now, Jeff, I don't know how this works, but you say it takes a while. What does a while mean?
Generally, you give them notice that they're in violation. You give them a certain amount of time to get into compliance, and if they don't get in-
That's my question. What's a certain amount of time?
Usually 30 days, but when it has, but if you're notifying them in the, in the middle of the winter for landscaping, you know, you have to wait till the next growing season, so it depends on what the issue is. And then if they don't comply, and then basically, they get a court appearance ticket. So whatever the period is to get them in front of the judge, you know, you have to wait. It could be, it could be, it could be 90 days to get them in front of the judge.
Do you know if we've even started the process a year ago, give them that 30 days?
I'm not sure where they're at in the process. This is basically just a general notice of violation, probably, so.
Because therein, therein lies our problem, right there. If, if, if we're not diligent on that end of things, pursuing them for compliance through the normal channels, and they're, they're left to just do whatever the heck they want, then-
I'll, I'll check with Rob, yeah.
This gentleman is gonna continually be in, in the middle.
I'll check with Rob and Mark, so.
It's unfortunate that he paid in advance. I, I don't know why he would do that, but it's, it-
He did it because they wouldn't give him the site.
Well, how, how many, how many businesses do you know where you pay everything in advance and, and put yourself on the line like that?
It's only a 30-day permit.
Okay, the guy is getting $20,000 for basically a two-week sales period.
Six grand.
Six grand for basically, he's, he sets up for two weeks for six grand in the parking lot.
Oh, he only does it for two weeks? Oh, I didn't know that.
Like Ju, it's June 20th to July 7th, so it's, it's only about 17 days, so. Not a bad deal, huh, for somebody that doesn't do with-
Okay, well, um, we, we did kick that horse around a little bit.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your support.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, we do have some staff referrals to send to staff. River Hill Ridge at Cherry Hill, John C. Lasco Trust, and Primrose of Canton. Do I hear a motion to send those to staff for review?
No, moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a set, uh, we have a public hearing to set for May 7th. Symmetry Property, the towns at Cherry Hill. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
Support.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, anything further to discuss? Any news items, any?
Hope, it'd be a busy construction season, so we'll probably, you'll have some bigger, bigger projects come to you later in the year that haven't been sent to us yet.
Hey, our first five to four, uh?
Our first nine, first meeting.
Our first nine, first meeting.
Okay, with nine people, you need a five votes in favor instead of four votes in favor now, so.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think so.
I'm opposed.
Were you able to move on?
You want to continue this?
I want to continue.